Bonjour, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cell phones. The parking validation machine for the garage under city hall is located at the rear of the chambers at the top of the stairs. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we'll review how the public may provide comment during today's session. At this time, please join me in saluting the flag and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now go to roll call. Myself, Justin Lardinois, I'm here. Vice Chair Nellis Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Barocchio is not present. Commissioner Bickford is not present. Commissioner Cantrell is not present. Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio is not present. Commissioner Rosario?
Here.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Here.
And Commissioner Young?
Here.
So we have seven folks in attendance, so we have quorum. Alright, summary of hearing procedures. Excuse me. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards on the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and/or appellant may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in the front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. For members of the public who attend by teleconference, the meeting technician will connect those persons who desire to speak in the commission so they may be heard. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony, and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After public testimony, the applicant and/or appellant may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers and response to Commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed and the public commission will take action on the... Sorry, the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protests to the City Council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports to this meeting may be accessed to the Planning Commission's website. Like to note that Commissioner Barocchio is now here with us. So we'll have the call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the Planning Commission members of the public to follow our code of conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the code of conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. Now we'll go into public comment. This is a point in the meeting where we can accept public comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are related to city business. For members of the public who attend in person, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the technician. For members of the public who join by teleconference, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your phone to raise a hand to speak. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: responding to statements or questions posed by members of the public or requesting staff to report back on a matter at a subsequent meeting or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. And I see Christie and Greco here. You're here to speak for public comment, Chris? Alright, we'll start with you.
So there's... There's several of us here that are here to talk about Agenda Item 3, the Olin Hotel project, and we've got plenty of concerns about that. However, we know it's Agenda Item 3 up for deferral to the sixth, and we don't know whether there's going to be a public speaking period for the hotel during Agenda Item 3, the deferral. So there's some confusion there.
Yeah, great. So just, we can pause Chris's time to clarify that. So yeah, we don't usually take public comment on deferrals, so this is an appropriate time to give comments since that item's technically not on the agenda.
Okay, so if any of us want to speak to the hotel, then now is the time? Okay, great. So I'll just continue here. You know, I did send in my assessment of the traffic impact analysis, so that should be in your agenda packet or available for all the commissioners to review. The neighborhood has some serious concerns about this proposed project, particularly as it relates to exceeding the urban village maximum allowances for setback, daylight planning, and, you know, height. And now with the proposed zero setback that the developer is seeking, that's completely unacceptable to our neighborhood, and it should be for anybody else that lives in the urban village. Now, my understanding at looking at this is that it will only impact the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village, his proposed zero setback, right? But if it happens in our urban village, what's to keep it from happening on the Stevens Creek East Urban Village? That SPAR winds up almost touching, right? So if it's allowed in our urban village, what's going to prevent the Planning Commission or City Council from allowing it to happen in other urban villages and impact other residential neighborhoods seriously? So we have a lot of concerns. We'll be getting those to you in emails and...
Thank you, Chris. Go ahead, Daphna.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Daphna Wolf. I'm President of the Winchester Orchard Neighborhood Association. Just so you know where it is, we are an island in the city. We're between Santa Moss and Winchester and 280 and Stevens Creek. We're right across from Santana Row. We are bordered directly on two sides by two urban villages, the Stevens Creek Urban Village and the Winchester Urban Village, as well as being touched by the Santana Row Urban Village. We're a highly active neighborhood association. We had people involved in all of those urban village task forces, which came up with guidelines for height and setbacks and integration into our neighborhoods. We are highly concerned with the Olin Hotel project as it seeks to set aside all of the hard work that was done by these task forces. I was personally on one for 18 months to set these heights and these setbacks and the integration with the neighborhoods. We want to make sure that those heights and setbacks and the integration is honored, as it was written, because to be honest, the neighborhood gave up a lot with that. We are not a NIMBY neighborhood. Everything's in our backyard. We have multiple high-density infill projects surrounding our neighborhood. But I have to say, and I want you to take a look at the Lynn Haven Neighborhood Project on Winchester with the new apartments. Take a look at Santana West and take a look at the Pulte Project. They've all used the urban village guidelines in order to build those projects and integrate with the neighborhoods. The Lynn Haven Project had to redo their entire project because of the setbacks and the height and the daylight plane. This Olin Hotel seeks to set aside all of that. It's not that we don't agree with the hotel. We would love to have something built there, but we would like it to conform to what the city has asked them to do. We'll be back on December 6th with many people from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphna. Do we have anyone else in the chambers for public comment on items not on the agenda? And as I clarified earlier, this hotel project is being deferred, so technically not on the agenda for the purposes of this. Okay, do we have anyone on Zoom for a public comment?
We do have one speaker, Brian Darby. Please unmute your device.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm glad I've checked in with this. I used to live in the urban project, or, you know, the mobile home park, and I can't talk too much about it because we had to sign some stuff. But I feel for these people. Not all developers, but they seem to, you know, they got the Google Village thing, and they've already decided to start cutting down on the housing. There's been a few other projects where they've reversed what they said, and even the mayor has said things about it, and it doesn't seem to really mean anything. You know, developers will do what they want to do. And I'm...I don't know how to word this. It just seems like a lot of the discussion doesn't happen here, you know? And I hold that up as if I was a developer, a very famous developer here who's involved in a lot of things. If I pick up the phone and call anybody on the council, I'm not sure about this particular commission, but anybody on the council, somebody will answer the phone. It's guaranteed more sure than gravity, and I will get a call back. As a citizen, if I do that, it's a hit or miss, and my thing is about 80%, more like 85% where nobody contacts me back. And if you have to go again and again and again and again and again and again and again, this item gets deferred, then more people are going to show up. We're hoping that people listen to us. I'm convinced in a lot of ways, especially where planning and development goes, the people who have the money have to say, period. There may be a 1% change, like the wonderful person that spoke about being on those commissions. I went to a lot of those meetings too, and the neighborhood did give up a lot. And I'm just telling the neighborhood, watch your Ps and Qs because they will take... You give them an inch, they'll take a universe. And they want to do away with those setback restrictions to make more money. And that's their job, it's the commission's job to balance that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, does that conclude public comment?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to Item 3, deferrals and removals from calendar. As previously noted, the hotel project at 390 Spar Avenue is being dropped. We re-noticed at the December 6th Planning Commission meeting. Staff, do we have any other deferrals or any commentary on that item?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. So consent calendar, there's no separate discussion of individual consent calendar items as they're considered to be routine, will be adopted by one motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
I hear you. We'll just talk about that after I go through the procedure. If a member of the commission requests debate, separate vote, or recusal on a particular item, that item may be removed from the consent calendar by the Chair and considered separately. The public may comment on the entire consent calendar and any items removed from the consent calendar by the Chair. Tonight, we have two items. There's our minutes from the November 8th meeting and then also a conditional use permit to allow the continued use of a 51-foot tall monopole at 3434 Martin Avenue. I am sorry. I've just been informed by staff that we actually do need to vote on the deferral. My bad for skipping over it. So let's go back to Item 3, apologies. Do we have a motion to approve the deferral of the hotel project to the December 6th meeting?
Motion to do so.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Casey and a second from Commissioner Tordeos. Any discussion? Alright, we'll go to a vote on that. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford is absent. Commissioner Cantrell is absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. I believe that's nine yes, zero no, and two absences. Okay.
Zero no, yes, correct.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I forgot. I didn't notice when Commissioner Oliverio joined us, but he's...
I have it.
Alright, great.
6:42.
Okay.
Three seconds.
Thanks. So returning to the consent calendar, we have on the consent calendar the minutes from the November 8th meeting and the monopole. We have a motion from Commissioner Oliverio and a second from Commissioner Casey to approve the consent calendar. I just want to be clear because I've heard that there's significant public interest in Item 7B regarding mobile home parks, which is on the general plan consent calendar, which is a separate section of the agenda. So we can take comment on that when we get to it. But for now, do we have any public comment on the minutes or the monopole? Any on Zoom? No? Okay, I think I see John shaking his head. Okay, cool. No public comment? Any discussion on the consent calendar? Alright, we will continue to a vote on Commissioner Oliverio's motion. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
I did want to discuss the item just real...
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I don't have the speaking order up. That's my bad. Yeah, go ahead.
Just the only thing was that on one of the reports, it showed that there was notice and guideline for workers to be placed on-site, and all that was in English. And just because we have such a large Latino workforce that speaks Spanish, I would like that, if possible, to be also in Spanish as well. There was a notice, a caution, and a warning, and I think those were kind of pretty significant. And I think that they should be translated in Spanish and put on there as well.
Sure. So then, can we get clarification from staff on that? And then if you feel it's necessary, we could pull it and have a longer discussion? Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay, staff, do you have any response to what the vice chair brought up about... I assume that's about 4B.
Can I have some clarification? I think this is on the plan set. Do you know what page it's on so I can take a look? Go fast.
Vice Chair Nellis Wise, do you know what page it's on that you were referring to?
There was a report that was done in regards to safety for the radio frequency.
Okay, is it...I'll have to get it up, but I think you're referring to...
It was one of the attachments.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a look. In...well, I guess if we're asking the applicant, we're probably going to have to pull it.
Chair, point of order.
Sure, Commissioner Oliverio.
I mean, the question is, does the city have a policy when we post things that they are always bilingual or trilingual? I think that's the question, right?
Vice Chair Nellis Wise, would you say that's accurate? That's your question?
This was specifically like a third party that was supposed to put this sign up there. I hope that it would be bilingual, but in the report, it just showed it in English. So I just wanted to make sure that... It seems like these stickers go on the site.
Yes, Commissioner. So the project site sign, it does not...it is in English, but there is a section of the sign that indicates what the project is, and if there are questions about the project, that they can contact a specific designated Spanish-speaking person in the department if they have questions about it. It's just, it's a matter of how much space there is on the sign to provide the main language and then information for someone who'd like to know more about what's on the sign to the public.
Okay, yeah. I just, there was one that was a notice and guideline for workers, and I think just because I think that there's so many Spanish-speaking folks in the trades, it should be in Spanish, so...
I think you might be talking about two different things because I think, Vice Chair Nellis Wise, you're talking about some kind of safety notice for workers, whereas Patrick, I think you were talking about the general project announcement sign.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I found this in...it's in the FCC radio frequency report. I don't have an answer. If we need an answer, we have to defer to the applicant.
Okay. And Commissioner Young, I think I saw your hand up?
Yes, I just...I was addressing the same issue you were as regards the confusion. And yeah, I believe that in the cell towers I've seen, it's normally whoever operates a cell tower has to put the warning signs in. But I agree with Commissioner Nellis Wise. It should be in multiple languages, so I'm not sure how to facilitate that through the staff, but I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. So Vice Chair Nellis Wise, did this...was your concern addressed or do you think we should pull this and have a longer discussion?
I would just like to see that the owner-operator makes sure to put these warning caution signs and especially notice and guidelines for workers to be translated also in Spanish and, you know, whatever other language you think is appropriate.
We'll work with the applicants to do that.
Okay, thank you. That should be sufficient for me.
Okay. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? I don't see any hands up, so...okay. Vice Chair Nellis Wise? No, sorry, this is the motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford is absent, and so is Commissioner Cantrell. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is nine yes, zero no, two absences. Okay, we will continue to public hearing. We have one item tonight. Excuse me. This is a large package of general plan amendments. I'll leave it to staff to characterize it beyond that, but this is PP 22-002, and I assume we have a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Martina Davis. I am a Division Manager with Citywide Planning. I am joined by David Fong, one of our planners on our ordinance team. David is pulling up and will give the presentation. Before he does, I'll just do kind of a higher-level introduction. This is the first of three zoning amendments you'll be hearing tonight that have a relationship with our housing element. This one, David, will talk about the two items of our three-item package in this one that are housing element-related. The other one is prior council direction. So just to let you know that because all three of the ordinances have an overlap of Amending Chapter 20.195, the part of that chapter that's in this ordinance would cover that farmworker housing. So we're going to have the commission act on all changes to 20.195 as part of the third ordinance you'll be hearing tonight. So we'll walk you through the recommendation. It's explained on the agenda, but I just do want to let you know if you're looking at our recommended language and you don't see those changes to 20.195 in this agenda item, they'll be heard, they'll be considered last, but we will be explaining what they are with this agenda item because they're related to the rest of this item. Sorry, I hope that did not create more confusion. But with that, I will turn it over to David and he'll walk you through the three items in this zoning amendment.
Thank you. Item 5A includes proposed zoning code changes related to 100% deed-restricted housing, agricultural employee housing, and accessory dwelling units. I'm David Fong, project manager on the ordinance team, and also present is Martina Davis, Division Manager. Staff routinely updates the zoning code to incorporate changes to align with new state law mandates and other requirements. The proposed zoning code update will incorporate modifications to conform with current state mandates, comply with housing element requirements, and to make the zoning code more consistent with prior general plan amendments. No additional changes are proposed to the code except to align the code with these requirements. This item proposes to implement specific changes related to 100% deed-restricted housing, agricultural employee housing, and accessory dwelling units. Staff would like to note additional clarifying revisions to the draft ordinance on pages 102 through 104. The proposed changes are to reorganize and reformat existing text with no changes to the content. The proposed changes regarding 100% deed-restricted housing is to ensure the code is consistent with a previously approved general plan amendment approved in December 2022. Those changes will be incorporated in certain zoning code sections based on City Council's earlier direction to remove commercial requirements intended to create a mixed-use development that will no longer apply to 100% deed-restricted affordable housing citywide. This change was proposed because there were previously financing challenges, and it would not allow, or it would now allow for better utilization of the density bonus. The proposed changes to our agricultural employee housing code are to comply with Employee Housing Act and the Farmworker Housing Act. Specifically, six or fewer employees will be permitted in the same manner as any single-family dwelling. Agricultural employee housing of less than 36 beds or 12 units would be deemed an agricultural use. Code changes will allow for streamlined ministerial approval for agricultural employee housing. The proposed changes would also allow us to conform to the housing element requirements. Next, we have changes to our ADU code. This update does not propose additional changes to residential units except for updates to better align with current state law provisions. This update is reflective of new state law mandates and will modify ADU regulations and incorporate clarifying revisions. It will repeal certain sections of Part 2.5, Chapter 20.30, and relocate those ADU regulations to Part 2.75, Section 20.80 of Title 20 under the specific uses category. Staff made last-minute changes to the second section for reformatting purposes and for better reading clarity. We are providing reformatting and presenting our code much closer to how the state presents their code, basically providing two clear code sections or paths for development. Our first section follows State Code Section 65852.2C, which has more development standard requirements but allows for larger ADUs. The second section follows State Code Section 65852.2 Subsection E, which has very minimal development standard requirements but has the provision to allow a minimum 800 square foot ADU in most circumstances. A 45-foot front setback requirement will no longer be required for detached ADUs provided it still meets the setback requirements of the zoning district. San Jose follows State Code more closely, specifically Subsection E, which will allow a total of three ADUs on one lot. This includes one brand-new ADU, which can be attached or detached, one detached ADU, which is an ADU converted from an existing structure such as a detached garage or barn, and one junior ADU. The maximum height allowed for ADUs will increase one foot. The limitations on maximum number of bedrooms and bedroom area, maximum number of bathrooms, maximum storage area restrictions have all been removed as long as they comply with the building code requirements. The City Council eliminated parking requirements in December of 2022. This section was effective in April of this year and will remove any prior references in the ADU section. You do not need to provide or replace any covered parking that has been removed as a result of a new ADU. There are no window or balcony placing restrictions for the second-story ADU. This allows more flexibility to build and ease of placing a legal bedroom on the second floor. As part of secret requirements, staff have rare determination of consistency to analyze changes in the proposed amendment discussed here. No new significant impacts beyond those already identified in the general plan and supplemental EIRs will result. No specific development proposal is part of this amendment to Title 20. The next step in this process is we have City Council hearing scheduled on December 5th, 2023. If approved, the proposed changes will be effective by end of January. You can follow Planning webpage for additional updates on these items. This is the end of staff's presentation. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, for your consideration.
Thank you, Martina and David. Let's see. Alright, just want to clarify, I misspoke earlier. These are not general plan amendments. These are municipal code amendments. That's my bad. Do we have any public comment for this item? I take it we don't? Okay. All right, we'll go to the commission. Any discussion on this item? Commissioner Oliverio?
Thank you, Chair. So staff on Item A, the elimination of commercial space in a commercial zone, where planners have historically wanted that continuity of commercial, because that's what was envisioned. This is just simply us bending to the fact of, how do I say this, that this is valued more than the actual historical commercial business district. Is that a fair analogy? Because if we valued it, we wouldn't eliminate it. Sort of a trick.
I mean, I guess, is the question, are we valuing 100% affordable housing over commercial space? I would say, fair, yeah, I think that that is fair, that that is reflective of the decision that council made last year. I'll just note, a part of it is that under the, so this is areas where we allow the housing. If they provide affordable housing under the density bonus, they can use a concession to remove that commercial space requirement, and we were finding that was happening regularly. So from that standpoint, it's also kind of a, you know, effectively, we didn't really have that requirement due to the density bonus anyway, so I will note that as well.
Okay, thanks. I just know that planners at heart probably love Jane Jacobs, and this kind of goes against that whole philosophy, so I just wanted to note that, thank you.
And I guess I'll also note, it's, as said in the staff report, and as Martina implied, this is formalizing a decision that was made by the council a year ago regarding commercial requirements for affordable housing. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, if not, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Vice Chair Nellis Wise and a second from Commissioner Rosario. Any further discussion, and if not, we'll go to a vote? Oh, Commissioner Brocio?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Question, a year ago, the City Council approved this, how did they, did the discussion of doing that transition from commercial to affordable housing, allowing that, did they talk about any? Did they talk about any discussion around the job-housing imbalance, right? Obviously, we're trying to get more, more jobs, right, so we could bring in more revenue, so we can support the people living here. Did they tackle that when they decided to do this?
Michael, are you able to, were you there for this one last year?
I was.
Sorry, I'm taking notes, what was the question?
So, yeah, no, no worries, it always, you know, tech is tricky. When they approved this, did they have a discussion around the job and housing imbalance, right? Obviously, if the commercial is gonna give way to affordable housing, which is great, how did they negotiate that with the need of more jobs in the city?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they didn't, and I would say, I mean, for the most part, these requirements for commercial are not about requiring a significant amount of commercial space in an affordable project, it was mainly requirements that would have the ground floor be, you know, commercial businesses. There could, there could have been cases where there was more than that, there might have been another floor of commercial requirement, I'm not saying that is impossible, but generally, it was just kind of, you know, the typical ground floor, commercial space with residential above and behind, so that was, so they didn't really talk about that. The, there was really interest, well, the reason they got rid of it is that in the discussions in the four-year review and at council, a lot of affordable housing developers came and spoke and said how it's really hard to finance and build the affordable. Apparently, in the past, affordable housing developer, when they got financing, the financing could pay and finance the commercial space, and from what we were told, that is no longer the case. So while they can get money, tax credits and other sources of funding for the residential, it's much harder to find financing for the commercial piece. So it's made it really hard, and the council was sympathetic to that, and it's, we're in a housing crisis, and they wanted to facilitate affordable housing, and they got rid of that. And as Martina said, the state law has effectively made that, effectively got rid of that requirement anyway, so what they were doing was essentially reflecting state law.
Thank you.
And to be clear, this is not about converting solely commercially designated land for housing development, this is for mixed-use designation, allowing affordable housing to be exempt from commercial requirements, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. I mean, you can layer on other recent state laws that make it more complicated, but that is correct. This is where we have policies that allow affordable housing to go forward in certain locations and where there could be commercial requirements, or there were commercial requirements that are no longer in the general plan, and now this, this is just aligning with that direction.
Right, but to be clear, this is not gonna facilitate, you know, land that's designated solely for commercial use being converted.
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Oliverio?
Michael, I just want to say, though, when we discussed the housing element update, and I gave you an example of Lincoln Avenue that has a commercial business district under the housing element, and this, you could remove 100% commercial building and put 100% affordable, and there is, you can do that by right, so what you're saying is contrary to what we had that discussion months ago.
Well, right, so, well, so a couple things on in neighborhood business districts. One, the council did approve allowing housing under certain circumstances in, in neighborhood business districts. Those zoning changes have not come to you yet, that, this is another example of where council made that change, but for various reasons, we haven't completed the zoning ordinances. Those will be coming next year. But in that situation, if someone's proposing an affordable housing, I can't remember what they all, I believe there are cases where we require mixed use in that general plan amendment that was done and direction we got from council, but it wouldn't apply to an affordable housing development. So affordable housing development wants to go on Lincoln Avenue, and they don't want to put commercial on a site that otherwise might be required to have ground floor commercial per council direction and the general plan, and now the proposed zoning ordinance, they would not have to do that.
Right, so they would be able to convert existing commercial retail space if they were built.
Yeah, I guess in that case, in that, in that case, they, they could, but again, it's where the general plan allows it to happen, it's not, it's not a commercial site where the general plan says you can't do housing.
Well, they can convert it, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? And I believe we, did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Right, Commissioner, Vice Chair Nellis Wise had a motion, and Commissioner Rosario seconded it. If there's no further discussion, we'll go to a vote. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Brocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bickford and Cantrell are absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. It's nine yes, zero no, and two absences. All right, we will go on to Item 6, we will continue the general plan hearing for 2023, Cycle 4, from the November 8 meeting. So now we'll go into the general plan consent calendar. We have two items tonight. One is GP 22-004, C 22-015, and ER 23-055, which is rezone, or changing the zoning and general plan land use designation for a property at the northeast corner of Doyle Road and Lawrence Expressway. We also have GP 23-006, which is a city-initiated general plan amendment to change the land use designation for 13 mobile home parks from their current designation to the mobile home park designation. Do we have, well, I have at least one speaker card for public comment, I have Karen Peters? Yeah, if you could come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes to speak. And to be clear, if you want to speak on either of those items, the rezoning at Doyle and Lawrence, or the mobile home rezonings, this would be the time to speak.
Point of order, please?
Commissioner Young?
So I would like to pull Item, Item B on the mobile home parks, only because I think there's a good amount of confusion amongst the public of what, what our intent is here. So I'm not sure if we want to do that before the public comment or not, that's the only reason I was saying.
I mean, if you want to pull it, that's up to you, so.
Yes, I'd like to pull it.
Okay, um, all right then, so we're pulling Item 7B, I'm sorry, Karen. We'll, we'll consider Item A, the Doyle and Lawrence, and then we'll return to this item and then take public comment, my apologies, we'll call you up in a moment.
Later, okay.
Yeah. All right, so do we have a motion to approve Item 7A, the Doyle and Lawrence property?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Torrios and a second from Commissioner Rosario. Let's go ahead and vote if there's no further discussion. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Brocio?
Yes.
Commissioners Bickford and Cantrell are absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes, that is nine yes, zero no, and two absences. All right, do we have a staff presentation on Item 7B?
Thank you, I have an oral presentation?
Sure.
So you're ready?
Oh, yeah, go right ahead, my apologies.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, my name is Justin Daniels, Supervising Planner for our Citywide Team, and I am the Project Manager for this general plan amendment, file number GP 23006. The City of San Jose has 58 mobile home parks with approximately 10,836 mobile homes that house approximately 35,000 residents, which is the largest number of mobile homes and households in California. Mobile home parks in San Jose vary in size, age, location, and type of mobile homes and composition of residents. The mobile home parks in San Jose also vary in terms of their general plan land use designations. Some mobile home parks are located in areas predominantly surrounded by industrial uses, and others are located in areas with residential land use designations. Since 2015, the city has undertaken several substantial actions to preserve mobile home parks, including the adoption of zoning ordinance changes, which made City Council as the initial decision-making body for any proposal to convert a mobile home park and exempting parcels with mobile home parks from being eligible for a streamlined rezoning process. General plan text amendments, which add enhanced goals, policies, and actions to protect existing mobile home parks, with the adoption of City Council Policy 6-33, titled Conversion of Mobile Home Parks to Other Uses, as a guide to help guide the implementation of the city's existing conversion ordinance in a temporary moratorium on conversions and closure. In May 2017, City Council directed staff to return to council with an analysis of general plan amendments for mobile home park sites to either a commercial, industrial, industrial park, or proposed mobile home park land use designation for those sites that currently have a residential designation. In March 2018, staff presented to City Council with analysis of the proposed general plan land use amendments for mobile home parks and the associated staffing requirement for moving these amendments forward. This analysis looked at all mobile home parks and their associated general plan land use designations. City-initiated, City-initiated general plan amendments to change the land use designations of mobile home parks would not directly prohibit a mobile home park owner from closing their park, but would create an additional transparent public land use entitlement process to develop these sites. Balancing the previous actions taken since 2015 to protect our current mobile home parks with the staffing resources required to undertake amendment for all mobile home parks, staff recommended that the council consider general plan amendments for two mobile home parks with land use designations that allowed for high-density housing. In spring 2019, following prioritization of the work by the City Council through the city's previous priority setting process, staff initiated work to create the new mobile home park general land use designation and planned to complete the general plan amendments for the two mobile home parks that allowed high-density housing by June 2020. On March 10, 2020, the City Council approved the creation of a new general plan land use designation entitled Mobile Home Park and applied it to 625 Hillsdale Ave., which is the Mountain Spring Mobile Home Park community, and to 500 Nicholson Lane., which is the Westwind Mobile Home Park community. City Council issued a memo on October 14, 2022, for staff to return to council with a detailed multi-year and timeline to complete the general plan land use designations work for the 56 mobile home parks that need a general plan amendment, including returning through the mid-year budget review with resources needed to complete land use designations this fiscal year for the 13 most-at-risk parks identified, and returning through the budget process with resources needed to re-designate the remaining parks in the city. Council also directed staff to streamline the public outreach process for this land use designation work, recognizing that this work that our mobile home residents had been aware of and actively fighting for since 2015. Staff will be changing the general plan land use designation on the remaining 44 mobile home parks in spring 2024. Therefore, all mobile home parks will have the mobile home park general plan land use designation once this project is complete. The 13 most-at-risk mobile home parks for redevelopment that are proposed to have their general plan changed to the mobile home park general plan land use designation are included in staff report. The request we have before you, consider the termination of consistency with the Division 24 general plan, adopt a resolution amending the Division 24 general plan land use designation for 12 mobile home parks from the residential neighborhood general plan land use designation to the mobile home park general plan land use designation, and change one mobile home park from the neighborhood community commercial general plan land use destination to the mobile home park general plan land use destination. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the general plan amendment. This includes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Justin. We'll go to public comment now. Karen, you can return to the podium, apologies for the interruption there. Oh, it's on.
Yeah, hi, my name is Karen Peters, I live in one of the mobile home parks at Caribes at 411 Lewis Road, and so my actually question is, how quick is that process, you know, that the mobile home parks will be removed, or, and in the, in the plan 2024, I read that they have to relocate 3,500 people, so I don't know how they want to do that, and, and I don't know how real the number is in that plan, because the plan exists a while, and we know that, you know, a lot of people there in the mobile home park living, there are multiple people in, in that mobile homes, so most of the times, the number is not real, so I think it's much more, it's 3,500 people to relocate, and then my question is, where you want to relocate them? Okay, I mean, I saw that stuck here, no, at Brian and Brenham and Monterey Road, there's stuck that, you know, apartments on top of each other, I mean, you know, there is no space for greenery in there, no streets, no nothing, so I don't know, I mean, I would not live there, I mean, it looks ugly, from, if you see it, and then, the other thing I want to mention, it's on Monterey Road, by Chateau La Salle, there was built a big condo complex, and so actually, you know, because of the little villages, they want to build, so that condo complex has a retail, actually, you know, there should be retail in, but that...
I'm sorry, I think that concludes your two minutes. Thank you. And, yeah, thank you for your comment. And, and just to clarify, the city's intent here is to preserve mobile homes as they currently are. Just want to address that. We have further public comments? We have further public comment on this item? Oh, card. Okay. Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Edward McDonald. I'm the attorney for the Caribes Mobile Home Park. One of our residents was here. And the owners are actually the Caribes Investors Limited. We object, and I'm here to place objection to this change to the planning commission. There is no need or rationale for it. There's no reason for choosing 13 mobile home parks to begin with, with this change. And this is not a single change. And I, and I just want to make sure the commission is aware that this is part of a three-part process that is strangling the mobile home park owners in this city. There's rent stabilization already that has been here for many years. Everyone's working through that, but it does restrict the ability to receive income for the property owners. There now is a conversion ordinance for the City of San Jose, which in my view is onerous, but it is in place and it is there. That prevents the wholesale conversion of mobile home parks in the City of San Jose. And now what is being proposed is a change to the zoning ordinance, which will be the third nail in the coffin on mobile home parks in this city. There's no justification for it. It is going to make the mobile home park ownership and process of management to be an uneconomical problem. It will not work. And it will be an unconstitutional taking, in my view. I, I believe that the city, the city's rationale for it, and at parts, they're transparent and say they're doing this to protect mobile homeowners. And then they use the guise of using the consistency plan. There is nothing about change, the consistency of the zoning ordinance here for my client's property, which is residential and I believe mixed a little commercial, to change it now to be mobile home only. This is an actual change in the classification, which is not required under the consistency ordinance, and it is being done to...
Thank you. That concludes the time for your public comment.
I would just caution the commission to look at all the issues, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the chambers for public comment on this item? And if not, we'll go to public comment on Zoom. Do we have any public comment on Zoom on this item?
Yes. Martha, please unmute your device.
Okay. Go ahead, Martha.
Okay. Martha O'Connell, Golden State Manufactured Homeowners Association, representing thousands and thousands of mobile home residents. The mobile home residents have been waiting for this action for over eight years. Not only is this action recognized as necessary by the city council, but the state of California put in writing on December 15th of 2022, this letter came from the HCD proactive housing accountability chief Melissa Coy. She wrote, "Given the importance of this housing type in addressing a variety of housing needs and its impacts on potentially displaced residents, implementation of program R6 should be revised to occur earlier in the planning period than 2026." And program R6 is the re-designation of all the parks to mobile home, to mobile home. So the state of California put the city on notice that not only should they do it, but they should speed up the process. So thank you very much to the council and to the mayor, who promised that he was going to get this done. And I hope, in all sincerity, that this vote is unanimous tonight and that you maintain one of the last bastions of affordable housing in the City of San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Do we have anyone else on Zoom for public comment?
Yes, we have four more people. Mike, you are unmuted. Please unmute your device.
Yes. As a resident of San Jose my whole life, I've retired in Quail Hollow Mobile Home Park. And I want to say thank you for your efforts to keep this land for seniors. And as a footnote, we do need more affordable mobile homes for seniors, not less, as San Jose continues to grow. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Mike.
Glenna, please unmute your device.
Hello, my name is Glenna Howcroft. I'm a GSMOL chapter president at Peppertree Estates. And although my park is not on this current list, we have been working on trying to get the mobile home parks re-designated for over eight years, and it's been an exhausting effort. We have written up, we've signed petitions, we've written letters, we've spoken at city hall. The stress of not having the stability of, you don't know if your, your home's going to be there or if it's going to be going under for some reason for development. We need, we need to have this re-designation. Currently, as far as I know, my mobile home park is still designated as light industrial. So, and that doesn't give me any comfort at all. It really doesn't. And there's a few people in my park that feel the same way. So it's, it's, like I said, we're weary. We're hoping that the mobile home parks will be given the designation without any further delay. We have, my park is a family park, but we have disabled seniors, we have senior, you know, seniors that are in fairly good health. We have disabled people here, veterans, a lot of people. And if this thing does not go through, and hopefully it'll go through before 2025. I don't know what list we'll be on, but hopefully it will come to a, a conclusion soon, I hope. Because like I say, we're weary. We're tired. We're tired of all of this. Eight years is too much. We're going on nine. So I'm, I'm hoping for something better. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Georgia, please unmute your device.
Hi, I'm Georgia King. I live in Quail Hollow also. And I've been going to meetings with petitions. It's been almost eight years now. And it's very stressful to live in an area that, that we're not sure of. I know that. Anyway, there's a lot of people that I'm representing here at the park to please make it into a mobile home park designation. This is, this has been a stressful time. I moved down here to be next to my children. I can't afford to, a million dollars for a home here. This is, this is what I can afford to do. I do not want to live with my children because my grandchildren are really loud. So I'd appreciate your thoughtfulness. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Yes, Jordan, please unmute your device.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Wabi. I'm in the Oak Park on First Street. I'm a tech worker, and I was lucky enough to get into the mobile homes. The, the vote to extend the protection is badly needed. I think the value of protecting 35,000 San Jose citizens, many of them work, bring tax and value to the, to the city, far outweighs the ownership of one park or two. Our park has been sold, and the new owner is very profitable and has actually improved the state of the park. This is the last bastion for limited-income individuals, whether they are retired or otherwise. And we look to the planning commission and to the council to protect the people of San Jose, including the 35-plus thousand that are part of this very thriving, very good, very peaceful community.
Thank you, Jordan.
Brian Darby?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. And I'd like to talk to another aspect of this. And I know that it basically doesn't matter because if you're not super wealthy or powerful, having emotions is irrelevant. And in anything that has to do with money, emotions are definitely irrelevant. I mean, they don't even register. In my personal experience, I watched people in the park I was in, and this is nothing against the developer because the owners have a right to do what they do. And you stay within law and it's actually, you know, we got a fair deal. But the emotional aspect, for the many years at the park, people wanted to keep their park for the same reason as many of the identifying people said. Watching them not know, you know, going from I have a place to live till I die to you don't know what you're going to have. And watching the fear and the terror and the stress go on and on and on and on and on, go to meeting after meeting after meeting, often being mocked, laughed at. At first, it got easier later, but you didn't get the, you know, the first time, you get the yawns and the eye rolls, and the people walk away. And it's like, there's an emotional aspect to this, and we're people. You know, we're human beings, and, and that doesn't even enter the list, it seems like. I'm being a little bit, you know, dramatic, but trying to make a point. Look, I was a younger person, and I was so, I hate to say this, but my mother passed before this started. I knew it was coming down the pipe. I started talking to her about it, you know, like 2009. Because of money, there's, and money is almost God in a lot of ways. It really is. And you just see that play out. Last seven years, it's really shown us that. And I think that should be important to stress, too. Because at first, we're people, and I can tell you the emotional pain in the lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Carl, please unmute your device.
Carl Brannon?
Good evening. This is Carl Brannon at Quail Hollow. We moved in seven years ago. At that time, we were assured there was going to be a, an imminent vote to establish mobile home park general plan land use. And as you can tell, we have lived under the torpor of not knowing when, where, how such a land use would come about. We are very pleased that the state is saying that this needs to take place, and we're very grateful to people like Martha O'Connell, who have worked so fervently to try to get the message through, that you are just about psychologically killing people off with this delay. And it's become even more apparent that it is a delay, that it doesn't achieve much when you look in the Mercury News, day in and day out, and find significant pieces of industrial or business property that are no longer in use and can be readily converted. We ask for your consideration in establishing the mobile home park general plan land use as quickly as possible. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carl.
Dan? Dan, please unmute your device.
The clock is three seconds. Oh. Okay, this is Dan Lewis. This is Dan Lewis in Quail Hollow. I think I want to just say what I feel is, years ago, this, this having mobile home parks when there was a lot of land available, I believe having them, being able to rent the land out for a mobile home park was great for the owners. And I believe it's been a great revenue generator for 48 years from our park of 1975. At that point, there wasn't a lot of housing issues. And at that time, it was totally different. But collecting money for 48 years, now there is a housing problem, so time is different. The life, what we live is different. We have to take care and provide housing that we haven't had before. We need to think about the projection of moving or displacing maybe 35,000 people. The, we have to think about the projection of the number of people that will become homeless. That homeless cost will be to the city, not to the developer or anyone else, to the city, and the impact to the people that become homeless. I think the key is the balance of the developer benefits and the owners and profits versus the city benefits and costs. The issue is, it was a good opportunity for the landowners back then. They've reaped a lot of money over 48 years, in our particular case. At the time, having a mobile park probably was a great use of their land to generate money and not having to produce anything on it. Today, it's a totally different world, and I think it's something that we need to protect the people that are there. The housing issue is different. And it, in the past, it would have been, you open another park, people would move to another park. There is no land. There is no place for people to move, and there will be homeless people. It'll cost millions of dollars to our city to not house those people. Also, I have a lot of people that come to work at my mobile home that envy the fact that we can live here instead of wish he could find something like we have, and he can't. So there's generations that will need this land, this housing.
Thank you.
Jill Borders?
Hi, thank you. My name is Jill Borders, and I live in the Imperial Mobile Home Estates in San Jose in District 10. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Yes, so Jill Borders, I'm in Imperial Mobile Home Estates in District 10. And I just want to say something. I have, you know, I have four file boxes full of files since 2015, when the city called me and said, "Hey, will you be part of a focus group to talk about displacing of mobile homes?" And it just threw me into the most serious stress-filled depression because we had just purchased, after saving all our money for a down payment eventually to buy something in San Jose. I was born and raised here, born at San Jose Hospital. Absolutely no chance to buy anything. And when we were displaced after six moves, six different moves from rate hikes, rent hikes, we had a decision to make. We were going to either move to Utah or we were going to stay here and buy a mobile home, one of the two choices. We couldn't, we just could not handle another rental situation where the following year the rent went up high again. It was just, we couldn't do it. And so we made one of the best decisions of our life, and that was to stabilize our daughter's life, moved here in 2013. And for 10 years, I have been able to be a present parent and raise my daughter and that, without having to tell her again we needed to move. That has meant everything to me. And I have continued to go to all of these meetings, continued to follow this. And yes, we need a land use designation that says, people matter, families matter. Those that are willing to stay and make a stake here in San Jose to make it better. We have home ownership opportunities for you, too. And right now, the only homeownership opportunities in San Jose for people like us in our income bracket are mobile homes. And I have, I have felt so lucky. I'm so grateful to our park owner. And please, continue to proceed by passing this tonight and do what has needed to be done for eight years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Hi, it's Debbie. We need senior housing in San Jose. Please change the land use designation for Quail Hollow so I can keep my home. I would really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gem?
Hello, this is Joan McKay from Quail Hollow. And I echo all the sentiments of the previous callers. I won't repeat everything. But I just have one more comment to add, and that is, take into consideration when you're looking at this item, that the seniors that live in these mobile home parks, myself included, are the people who actually have worked in this community, San Jose, Santa Clara County, and built it to what it is today. So this is our way of continuing to live in that community that we have helped form. So I appreciate your consideration, and eight years is a very long time to wait for this to change. And I hope that you will unanimously approve this tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the commission. I see Commissioner Young?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank, um, the folks here and all the folks that called in on Zoom. Um, we very much value your input. Um, Mr. Daniels, thanks for your presentation. I'd like to start just by saying, um, or asking, I guess. I know when I came on the planning commission, it was difficult even for me to understand sometimes the intent. So I wonder if you could just in as few words as possible, just talk about what is the intent of these changes?
Yes, excuse me. The intent is to preserve our mobile home parks by changing the land use designations to mobile home parks. Um, currently, most of the mobile home parks have industrial, um, general plan designations, commercial general plan designations. And city council directed us to come up with the mobile home park general plan designation to align it with what the use is actually there.
Great, that, that's really helpful. I, the reason I ask is because we, we received some emails and other comments. And I think some folks felt that this might make it actually easier to convert a mobile home park. And I, I just wanted to kind of confirm for those here and those on Zoom that the intent of the council. And, um, the staff is to try to preserve mobile home parks as much as possible in the city, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thanks. And just a comment I would make is, uh, my wife and I, uh, started out in a mobile home. That was the first, uh, home we could purchase. And, um, as some people talked about, um, it's a great, um, entry level for folks to get into, um. Housing ownership because you do own the, you own the mobile home and you rent the space from the park owner. So I think it's really important that we preserve our mobile homes. I'm really actually proud of how many mobile home parks we have in the city. Um, and, uh, you know, with the, with the, uh, housing crisis that we have and the affordability crisis that we have. I think it's really important that we, um, that we preserve our mobile home parks as much as we can. So I'd like to thank the staff for the work on this and I'll definitely be, uh. In fact, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation.
Do we have a second for Commissioner Young's motion?
I second.
Second from Vice Chair Nellis Wise. Commissioner Rosario, I see your hand up.
Sure, I was just gonna thank all the callers that called in tonight. I think Dan, I think the woman who was deciding whether or not she had to move to Utah and leave her family or the town she grew up in, I can really relate to that. I actually lived next to Chateau La Salle, uh, in those condos and with a very funky building that's designated for commercial use with nowhere to park. It's odd. But I, I remember also my sister trying to move into Chateau La Salle and those mobile homes still get up to half a million dollars. And I think I remember reading at the time, it's one of the only mobile home parks in the country where. The value of your prefab house will actually increase, um, is here in San Jose. And so I, I strongly support the motion.
Commissioner Brusio?
Perfect, thank you. Yes, um, I would also like to thank everyone who's, who's called in, um, ensure their experience. A quick question around, one of the callers said that they are from a mobile home park, but they're not included in the twelve that we're talking about today. How were these twelve selected and is there a plan just to make a blanket, um, amendment or change? Where all mobile home parks are included in this? Or is it happening in stages? And if so, what's the thinking behind that?
Sure. Um, we will, our goal is to complete all the mobile home general plan amendments for the remaining, uh, mobile home parks. Um, in spring of twenty twenty-four. Um, we will have to, uh, because of noticing how much notices goes out for these and the staffing. We do have to break them up, um, in batches, um, to achieve, you know, the, um, the deadline that we have. Um, so yes, eventually they will all have the mobile home general plan designation coming before you. Um, and these were chosen. Uh, we had some funding by council and it was minimal and, um. They really see which ones are most at risk for development with the funds that we have. And we picked the thirteen that with our analysis were the most at risk for development. So that's how the thirteen came about.
Just a clarifying question, um, how many more are left between now and spring twenty twenty-four?
We have fifty-eight mobile home parks, two have previously had a general plan change amendment back in two thousand nineteen. So that's fifty-six. We did, we're doing thirteen now. So then that's forty, sorry, forty-three? Forty-four mobile home parks by spring twenty twenty-four. So right now is the first thirteen, but as we're doing this, we can do more in a batch than just a thirteen. So we're still analyzing which ones we're gonna do now and how we're gonna do that. Um, but they're being bigger batches instead of like thirteen, maybe we have twenty next time and then twenty-four next time.
Okay. And just to, um, address, um, the concern of the owners of the mobile parks, like the. Um, like the gentleman that came to speak before us, um, representing one of the property owners, thank you. Once they become a mobile designation, mobile park designation. What would it take for it to flip and for the land to be developed? Would it, would it take a vote from the residents? Would it take an appeal from, from the property owners? Like what would it take to reverse this?
Yes, so we are proposing to change it, the general plan to mobile home park general plan designation. So if it's approved, it will have that designation. The property owner can submit a general plan amendment to change it to another designation if they wish to develop that. Um, however, we do have policies in place for mobile home conversions. And as well, the, um, general plan amendment to change it from mobile home park would have to go to city council. Um, because they are decision-making body for that. So, um, it's just another layer of protection on that. But it doesn't mean that the property owner can't propose to do something different.
Okay. And in the history of San Jose, um, has that happened? Has, has a, um, has there been a mobile park designation and has that ever been flipped?
The mobile home park designation was just created, so we only have two properties, uh, two mobile home parks out there that have that general plan designation. So now we have an experience, um, a property owner changing it from mobile home park to another general plan designation.
Yeah, so over the last five, six, six years or so, the council's done a number of steps to add for the reductions to house, uh, mobile home parks. The reason for that is because of the Winchester mobile home park. Which, are you familiar with the Winchester mobile home park?
No.
Okay, so the Winchester mobile home park was a very, very deluxe mobile home park for seniors that was across the street from Santana Row and the Winchester Mystery House. It was from the early seventies. It looked like Frontier Village for some of you that go back to San Jose history. Um, and, uh, the, the family, it was actually, the family decided to close it and sell it to developer. And so it was because of that initial announcement that they were planning to close it, that all of this work started. Um, and that's why we are here today. And so that park did close. It's now a combination of. I think like three-story condos and then higher density seven-story buildings. There was an arrangement that was made, um. With the existing owners to either buy them out or to say they could live on site with the existing rents that they have. Um, and be relocated into the units that are being built. So there was arrangements that were made as part of that process. Um, and, uh, so that, but yeah, that, that's the first, I think, only mobile home park that has closed in San Jose.
I see. Perfect. Thank you for the clarity.
Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
I just have a quick land use question in regards to someone proposing a new mobile home park. Would then, because obviously these are designated, would someone else have to fall under this? Or would it still be allowed under other general plan or zoning designations?
To build a new mobile home park?
Correct.
It would have to have the zoning and general plan designation of mobile home park.
So my concern is that if someone else wants to come in and do a mobile home park. Would they be able, it looks like all of these are designated to the fifty-three currently. But if someone wanted to propose a new park, then are you gonna designate some other land?
As part of this process, we're not designating any land. Um, if a property owner chooses to want to build a mobile home park. If, more than, it's not gonna be a, a general plan of mobile home park because those are existing ones. They would have to change a general plan to mobile home park and a rezoning to mobile home park to do a mobile home, a new mobile home park within the city.
Just as long as someone else, I just wanna make sure that someone else can propose one if they choose to.
If a property owner wants to propose, yes, they would have to go through the general plan amendment process and rezoning.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Thank you Chair. So, um, the city does have a conversion policy. If you did want to convert a mobile home, that you'd have to provide various levels of compensation to the existing residents, which happened at Winchester. When they converted a hundred and eleven units to six hundred and eighty-seven. Um, but is it really the intent of staff and council that. There should be, that should never happen again and we're putting these things in place to restrict. Any and all changes that could ever be proposed, even if. They compensated in all the things that were done at Winchester.
Yes, it's another added layer of protection for our mobile home park residents. It's not to say that the owners can't, you know, come up with a project and, you know, present it to us. But the intent is to preserve these mobile home parks as is for current residents and future residents.
And then that this, uh, this, uh, would just make that much harder, right? That person would have to go through a lot of hoops.
Correct.
To try to redevelop the property, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, to be frank, I don't know that adding a general plan amendment to this process makes it a lot harder. The process is already challenging. There's a lot of hoops you have to go through. Uh, it's a discretionary decision by council, so I think, um, it could happen again. And if it were to happen again, I would expect it would probably fall under the model of what happened at Winchester Ranch. But get, but it's very clear council has made a statement that they intend, and the general plan does, that we intend to preserve these. But it's not to say that someone couldn't propose something and it could go through the process in the future.
Right. And then, uh, and, and, and there's a reason, I'm assuming, that no one has built a new mobile home park in decades. What would you say that is?
Land, that's my opinion.
It's not the most economical.
Economic, yeah.
Land. If you, I mean, these parks were developed in the, you know, late fifty-six, mostly sixties and early seventies. When the economics in this valley was very different. They probably converted an orchard into a mobile home park. Um, we don't have that kind of land anymore. The economics have changed very much.
Sure. And when I look at the, uh, the mobile homes that are on our agenda item tonight and I add up the acreage, it's three hundred and thirteen and a half acres. And when I add up the units, it's twenty-two ninety-two, which is approximately seven units to the acre. And I think by all modern planning, uh, philosophies, I would say that density is probably pretty low. Uh, but at the same time, we have seen established single-family home neighborhoods that I feel are important to protect. Uh, but we're just basically making the policy decision that there will be no change. And that change in the city will be in designated growth areas of the city such as downtown and next to light rail stations. But we're definitely, you know, not having, not gonna allow the property owners to develop their property. Uh, and at the same time, uh, the single-family home neighborhoods are protected up until the state takes that power away as they've been doing over the years. Uh, I'm gonna support it, but I'm acknowledging the fact that we are making a policy decision to, you know, protect these thirty-five thousand units at very low density. Because of the type of housing stock it is, we're restricting the private property owner what they can do. But it's because they believe that the policy is better. And for someone, again, who supports, uh, putting a bubble over single-family home neighborhoods and putting density, uh, where it's meant to be, then that seems to go fine for me. But, uh, I think, uh, you know, to the first speaker, this policy definitely does not push out thirty-five thousand people. It will allow thirty-five thousand people to stay in place. Thank you.
And, uh, before we vote on this, I just wanna speak on this because this is an issue that's been on my radar for a long time. Before I was on the planning commission, I was on the Housing and Community Development Commission, which, among other things, um, has mobile home issues in its purview. And when this mobile home park land use designation was being discussed for creation, I voted in favor of it on that commission. Um, and I also wanna point out, it was discussed in public comment that mobile home parks provide low-cost housing to seniors. And some parks are designated specifically for seniors, but some are not. And they serve a wide breadth of vulnerable communities. So absolutely in support of this, um, as I have been in the past, to help preserve mobile home parks as they are. Uh, as a source of low-cost housing. So, um, I see no other hands up, so we'll go to a vote. Uh, Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Brusio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford and Cantrell are absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeus?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. I believe that is eight yes, one no, and two absences.
Yes.
Um, all right. So we'll move on the agenda. Um, we are now going to the general plan public hearing. Um, first off, we have item A, which is GP twenty-two dash oh oh five, twenty-three dash one hundred, C twenty-three dash one oh one, C twenty-three dash one oh two, and C twenty-three dash one oh three. Um, which concerns, um, changing land use designations in the Willow Street Neighborhood Business District. Do we have a staff presentation for this?
Yes, we do. Thank you Chair and Commission. My name is Laura Mauer and, and I am the project manager for the general plan amendment file number GP twenty-two dash zero zero five. And conforming, conforming rezoning file numbers, C twenty-three dash one zero zero, C twenty-three dash one zero one, C twenty-three dash one zero two, and C twenty-three, uh, dash one zero three. To understand where this, uh, these proposed changes originated, I will provide a brief background to, for the amendment. In the last general plan for your review, there was an included work item to explore policies to allow additional housing capacity in specific neighborhood business districts. Including the Willow Street Neighborhood Business District. This work item was based on the housing crisis plan, work plan item number thirty-one, which was to allow the integration of housing. And underutilized business corridors with the intention of enhancing their commercial vitality. At a virtual community meeting held in April of twenty twenty-one. The, with the Kaewillo community to discuss the proposed residential capacity increases. The community expressed overwhelming concerns regarding gentrification and the displacement of small businesses. Results of a poll conducted at the meeting identified that the majority of the attendees preferred limiting residential densities to thirty-five dwelling units per acre. And a thirty-five foot maximum building height. On December seventh, twenty twenty-one, council approved no change to residential capacity within the Willow Street Neighborhood Business District. As staff, recommended by staff. And they directed staff to change the land use designation on appropriate parcels in the Willow Street Neighborhood Business District. From the mixed-use commercial land use designation to the neighborhood community commercial land use designation. To reduce small business displacement risk. Staff has included some additional changes within and adjacent to the neighborhood business district. To better match existing uses and to address the stated desired land use form of the community. The project site contains fifty-six parcels, shown in yellow on the map. Located along or adjacent to Willow Street between Highway eighty-seven and Mastic Street located in Council District Three. Fifty-one of the fifty-six total parcels are in, within this Willow Street Neighborhood Business District, otherwise known as Kaewillo. And five parcels are adjacent to the neighborhood business district. The to, the overall site is approximately eight point nine nine gross acres with a mix of commercial and residential uses. The, the adjacent uses to the sites are, also include a mix of single and multifamily residences and other similar small, like, small lot commercial uses. The subject site is not within any designated growth area. All fifty-six parcels, um, proposed are currently mixed-use commercial. Which allows residential and commercial development with a maximum of fifty dwelling units per acre. A minimum, and a minimum, uh, point five commercial FAR for mixed-use development. commercial FAR for mixed-use development. The city initiated general plan amendment, is proposing to change the land use designation of 35 parcels from mixed-use commercial to neighborhood community commercial. These sites were chosen because they had existing commercial uses or commercial buildings that may currently be vacant. There are 17 parcels that are being proposed to be changed from mixed-use commercial to mixed-use neighborhood. These parcels have existing single or multifamily residences, and they're adjacent to either other multifamily residences or commercial uses. Two parcels are being recommended to change from mixed-use commercial to residential neighborhood. These are for parcels with existing single-family residences that are adjacent to other single-family residential areas. And lastly, there are two parcels that are proposed to be changed from mixed-use commercial to open space parkland and habitat. These two parcels are recommended because they are owned by the Santa Clara Valley Water District and are directly adjacent to the Guadalupe River. In addition, there are four conforming rezoning files, one for each proposed designation change. So there are five parcels that are being recommended to be changed from their existing zoning district to the CP Commercial Pedestrian Zoning District, 17 parcels to the MUN Mixed Use Neighborhood Zoning District, two parcels to the R18 Single Family Residential Zoning District, and two parcels to the Open Space Zoning District. 30 of the 56 parcels already have a conforming zoning district for their proposed land use designation and did not require rezonings. These rezonings are to satisfy SB 1333, which requires a conforming zoning district to the general plan land use designation. As described in the staff report, the project is mostly consistent with relevant policies in the general plan. The general plan is not supportive of the reduction or loss of employment land, which these land uses can do, but the change in its land use is intended to reduce the risk of displacement of existing thriving small businesses. The land use changes prioritize maintaining the existing vibrant districts over the higher employment capacity that could be possibly utilized in the future. These land use changes also better meet the building form desired by the community. A determination of consistency has been prepared for the project and is included as part of the permit. The determination of consistency concludes that the project is consistent with the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan. Therefore, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to city council to consider the determination consistency and to approve the general plan amendment and for conforming rezonings. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. We'll go to public comment. Do we have any speakers on this item? Take that as a no. We'll go to the commission. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Commissioner Oliverio?
Apologies for speaking a lot this evening. So staff, this goal here is to essentially preserve the existing district, it's a business district, commercial district, that's been there for decades, and to really lessen any economic advantage of development by lowering densities, by, again, putting up some more hoops and things of that matter, because the concern of, what I understand, is a gentrification of a predominantly Latin American business district, and so let's, much like the mobile home, let's put restrictions in place to protect it.
Yes, correct.
And then when it comes to a 100% low-income housing project, can it circumvent what we're doing tonight and knock down a retail building and put something up?
There are some general plan policies that do allow that in circumstances, but I think there's a lot of requirements. I think policy H 2.9 does allow on sites that are smaller than an acre and a half and meet a bunch of other requirements. They can potentially put in 100% affordable housing.
Got it.
So hang on a second. So, yes, there is a policy that allows you to put affordable housing in commercial if you meet criteria. I would say, though, that these properties probably, for the most part, don't meet that criteria. It's not the general plan that could allow affordable housing. It's recent state law changes, AB 2011 SB 6, and, you know, that's a longer conversation. But essentially, where that could happen is through state law changes.
Got it. And of course, someone could assemble properties to make it larger, et cetera. And, yeah, I get it. I just want to point out the intent and what we're trying to do here, because not every business district gets this, and we're making a policy choice that this one has its unique history. And I know it very well, because my family and I grew up in an apartment on Willow Street and used to go to frequent all those businesses as a toddler, and less frequently now, but still appreciate its uniqueness. So thank you.
Commissioner Tordeus?
Thank you, Chair. I definitely understand, you know, the intent here of trying to discourage redevelopment, preserve these existing neighborhood-serving businesses. I think where I struggle is, you know, what Michael just alluded to, that, you know, state law is starting to preempt a lot of what the city is actually able to do here in terms of preventing future residential redevelopment. I understand that this process, you know, had huge support from the community and was also started before a lot of those laws have come into effect, but I'm curious if these recent changes at the state level will kind of change the way that staff and the city approach this sort of policy moving forward.
I'm not sure if Michael wants to take that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, that's a really good question. I mean, I think, you know, I think we don't always know what's coming with state law. We can guess, so we kind of move forward with creating a framework that we think makes sense for our community and meets the needs of our community and per the direction of city council. And then lo and behold, something happens where the state does something that kind of puts a wrench in that. So, you know, I think we are here today, this is something that started earlier, but there's now a loophole for projects that could go under state law. I'm not super familiar with either law. I mean, I am, but not to the detail to understand exactly how it would affect this corridor. That's a lot, probably a follow-up conversation. But, yeah, it's hard, because a lot of the work that we've done over the years is kind of being circumvented by state law, and there are things that we did that made sense at the time, but if we had known state law was coming, we wouldn't have done it. And it's not just because, well, what's the point? State law is going to change it. There's unintended consequences that have happened because of us being forward-thinking, maybe for housing or other things, that like, oops, gee whiz, the state just changed the law. And if we had known that, we wouldn't have been so forward-thinking in what we were doing before. But, you know, you can't see the future. If we could, I think we would probably be doing, I don't know, annual no comment, we'd be billionaires, I guess. But, yeah, so, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. I think I'm just sensitive to the fact that, you know, this department is basically always busy year-round, so if we're going to be having staff spend cycles on policies that at the end of the day, because of state law, are not actually enforceable in certain circumstances, that's kind of what I was getting to here. But thank you for the very detailed answer.
I do just want to add, though, regarding state law, and that is that we're not just as staff passively accepting what the state gives us. We are actually very involved in working with many of the authors. So Martina and Jared, who are sitting up there, were very involved in crafting this legislation. So, you know, did it change a lot of things for us? It did, but there were concerns, specific concerns that we had that we were able to work with the authors to address. And then also, a lot of times, the authors are not planners. They don't know how these things work, and the effects are unintended on their part, or they don't realize that what they're crafting is not going to reach the objective that they want, because they don't know how these things work. So we do work closely, and we've been known once in a while to sponsor bills ourselves.
Vice Chair Nelswise?
I just wanted to thank the staff and the City Planning Office for taking the initiative to make this happen, to really preserve. It means a lot to me and to the community there. I know a lot of it is Spanish-speaking, and I just say, good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That would be a motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner, Vice Chair Nelswise, to approve the staff recommendation, I believe, a second from Commissioner Tordeus. So we don't have any other hands up, so we'll go to a vote on this. Vice Chair Nelswise?
Yes.
Commissioner Brocio?
Yes.
Commissioners Bigford and Cantrell are absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeus?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is nine yes, zero no, and two absences. That passes. Okay. Now we'll move on to item 8B, which is GP 23-005 and GPT 23-005. And this is related to housing overlay districts in North San Jose. We'll go to the staff recommendation, or staff presentation on this. And I believe we're being passed out minor corrections on this item.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Ruth Gueto. I'm a principal planner, and I'm here with Ed Schreiner, supervising planner, to present on the North San Jose overlay districts. So just some background, we are here as this item is related to the six-cycle housing element. This is the city's official housing policy document. It's required by the state, and it is an eight-year-long planning effort that has, it runs from 2023 to 2031. This is just a list of our housing goals, objectives, policies, and programs. There were five overarching goals as part of our housing element document, abundant and affordable housing stocks, stability, opportunities to build wealth, healthy and thriving neighborhoods, along with other goals. This timeline provides some information on where we started earlier this, or the middle of this year, in terms of the North San Jose work. So we came to the Planning Commission in May of 2023 with our housing element document. It was adopted by the city council in June. We submitted it to the state soon after that, and in August received the second round of comments from the state. We've since been working with the state and stakeholders to make some revisions to the plan, and we have posted a revised housing element document last night, this morning, for the mandatory seven-day review period, and we expect to resubmit to the state soon after that, maybe, I think it's about 10 days, for their next 60-day review and hopefully certification of the document. On December 5, we'll be at city council with the recommendation from Planning Commission tonight on these, this overlay and other rezonings that you will hear about tonight. And then we expect HCD to return their determination or comments to us in January of next year. Just a quick reminder, this is our San Jose RENA goals. These are the goals in terms of housing that we're planning for, for this housing element update, 62,200 units across four income categories. The sites inventory currently has 438 sites with a capacity for roughly 4,800 units, and they're broken up above, sites inventory and opportunity sites are the same thing, it's just interchangeably, language that we use. The inventory methodology for the housing element, what we, this is just very high level, what we did to select and identify sites was identify sites that aligned with our major strategies for where we wanted to see growth. These sites had to have necessary zoning and general plan designations that allow for housing, an exception here is North San Jose, and which is why we're here tonight with the overlay. These sites have to have realistic capacity and development, and we also focused our efforts to identify sites in a manner that affirmatively furthered fair housing. And that means identifying as many sites, as many lower-income sites in what the state calls under their TCAC maps, outside of lower resource areas, and North San Jose is generally, I think, high and highest resource area of the city. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thanks, Ruth. Ed Schreiner, supervising planner with the citywide planning team. Guess, just give you a brief background on what we're looking at tonight. The concept of overlay districts are actually something that's somewhat new to us as far as kind of our zoning toolbox. And essentially, what an overlay district is, is it's kind of a layer on top of the existing zoning that essentially allows potential additional uses on the site. So for both the general plan purposes and the zoning purposes, you know, the quote "color on the map" does not change, but this overlay district is imposed on top of that, which would allow some additional uses, in this case, the possibility for residential uses. In most cases, the proposal could develop under these residential uses, or it could develop under the base zoning, which in most cases is like an industrial park or maybe a transit employment center zoning district for these properties. There is an existing overlay district that we do have in place called the Transit Employment Residential Overlay. This was established in our general plan roughly a decade ago. However, from the zoning standpoint, we actually just implemented in the zoning code roughly two years ago, I believe. So for this, what we're, purposes of what we're looking at tonight, we're proposing two additional housing overlay districts. The AHO, or Affordable Housing Overlay, in this case, this would require residential development at least 75 dwelling units per acre, and also with the condition that 100% of the units developed would need to be affordable housing, essentially available to people making 80% of area mean income or less, or sorry, area median income or less. The second housing overlay district we're proposing is what's called the Mixed Income Housing Overlay, or the MEHO, which is for residential development sites, again, at the 75-plus dwelling units per acre. However, this, the condition is only 25% of those units must be affordable at the same levels, while the remaining 75% of the units can develop at kind of what we would consider market-rate housing. So in total, for what we are proposing tonight, we're adding five new sites to the Affordable Housing Overlay, 13 new sites to the Mixed Income Housing Overlay. We're shifting five sites from the existing Transit Employment Residential Overlay, which would be a purely market-rate housing overlay, to the Affordable Housing Overlay. And additionally, we're removing two other sites from the existing tarot, because those sites have been developed as city parks and are really, at this point, no longer viable for housing. As I mentioned, it's similar to the existing Transit Employment Residential Overlay that we have. Again, developers could continue to develop under the base zoning district, and the two housing overlay districts have very similar rules with, to the tarot, with the addition of the affordable housing requirements. I apologize that this map is not super easy to read, and I want to let you know what I handed out to you just before my presentation. A couple of the APN numbers listed on this table were actually incorrect. However, the existing map is correct, and all the other information was correct. So if you just look at what was handed out, you might see APNs highlighted in bold, and those would actually be the correct APNs corrected from the existing exhibits you would have seen in your staff report. So the Affordable Housing Overlay sites are concentrated Um, so the affordable housing overlay sites are concentrated, uh, in the more northern part of, uh, North San Jose, uh, centralized kind of around the light rail line on, on Tasman and North First. Um, and in addition, a few sites in, uh, the Ring Con area, which are, uh, currently, I guess, developed with kind of economical hotel uses. Uh, the mixed income housing overlay sites, um, are spread kind of more, uh, across, um, what, of the length of, of North First Street, um, running from the north to the south here. And I'm happy to go back to any of these slides if anyone has questions about a particular property. Um, however, so these are the proposed development standards, uh, for the housing overlay sites. Uh, these mirror, uh, the existing development standards for our, our Transit Employment Residential Overlay. Um, so again, this is, uh, proposing fairly high-density residential, uh, but not, uh, you know, not dissimilar to some development, uh, that's, that's in that area. Um, there, there's certainly been, uh, developments along North First Street that are in, uh, kind of the seventy to eighty dwelling units per acre rate. And so, as, in summary, uh, we're recommending that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council, uh, consider the termination of consist, consistency with the City of San Jose, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one housing element update supplemental EIR, uh, in accordance with SEQA. Uh, there's, all the, uh, SEQA impacts were analyzed in the, the housing elements supplemental EIR. Um, adopt a resolution to add the affordable housing overlay and mixed income housing overlays to Chapter Five of the special use, land use designations, uh, and make a clarifying edit to Chapter Five under Transit Employment Center, as well as adopting a resolution to amend the general plan land use map to include these overlay districts as well. And finally, adopt ordinances updating, uh, Title Twenty of the Municipal Code, uh, to establish the, uh, Affordable Housing Overlay District and Mixed Income Housing Overlay District in the zoning code, as well as to change the zoning map, uh, for the designated properties. And this concludes the staff presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to public comment on this item.
We have one commenter on Zoom.
All right.
Jason, please unmute your device.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your time. I, I appreciate that, uh, staff has spent a lot of time, you know, contemplating how to best, uh, accomplish its, its housing requirements. Um, and, you know, in this case, you know, we, we've been a long-time significant property owner for three decades in partnership with San Jose on, on many, on many projects. You know, in this case, while you guys have been talking about this for a long time, we, we've had no, uh, there's been no outreach to us on this. We got the notice on the sixth, and here we are, a week, just almost a week later, and, you know, five of the ten sites that are, that are being proposed for this one hundred percent, you know, uh, AHO are, are properties owned by, by our firm, and it, uh, you know, it, it feels almost like, uh, like a taking, you know, here. Um, and I think that, I, I just believe a mix of housing types would inspire just a much more robust, vibrant, sustainable community. And for us to have no notice, I, I would request that there be, there be a delay, a chance for us to sit down with the Director of Planning and to have some, some real talks about, about, uh, this, this whole process and about what these, uh, properties, uh, you know, what the best and highest use of these properties might, might be. You know, seventeen of the thirty acres of, you know, of this are, are ours, um, and it feels disproportionate that we'd be okay with the, with the MHO, the mixed income, um, but, uh, for, for half of these sites to be ours feels unfair. Um, and I would respectfully request that we have substantive discussions where we could sit down and actually, uh, talk about what's best for this neighborhood and, um, what's best for, uh, you know, how, how we can help in, in accomplishing your guys' goals as well. So, yeah, thank, uh, thank you very much, and, uh, again, we'd be okay with the MHO, but this is, you know, there's got to be some middle ground here.
Thank you, Jason. Does that conclude public comment?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I just want to throw it back to staff, see if there's any response to what was raised in that comment.
Um, I guess just, uh, I mean, quick response of the, uh, there was also a community meeting, uh, held for this, uh, back in early October, and, and the same, uh, notices would have been sent out at this point, or at that point. So, um, I'm not sure that, uh, you know, a week ago would have been the first time they would have received notice of this. Um, and I believe we, we, staff has made, uh, I guess, numerous, uh, attempts to contact, uh, Perry Ariaga. I don't know, do you guys, I know Nancy might have.
Yeah, may I understand correctly, my wrong, there's Joe and OE Office of Economic Development reached out to prop, representative of the property owner, and we didn't hear back. But that being said, uh, Jared did meet with the property owner, I think, yesterday, or representative of the property owner.
Yes, we, we did have a, a conversation with, with Jason, uh, just last week about this. He called, and we, we had made some other outreach to, um, the, the, the firm that, that, that owns the, the properties previously. Um, we're happy to continue to have some conversations with them, but prior to, to, before council as well. Um, but the, these were included in the, the housing element as well, um, pre, previously.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I mean, the, Jason, who's speaking at public comment, was speaking on behalf of a property owner, and if a property owner doesn't want to redevelop their property into affordable housing, it doesn't really matter whether it's designated, whether it has this overlay or not, correct?
Correct. I mean, they, they could, uh, continue to develop their property under the IP base zoning, uh, for the, for their site.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any hands up. Do we have any discussion? Oh, okay, here we go. Uh, I have Commissioner Oliverio and then Commissioner Tortillas.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, but I think it's fair to say on the housing element, the city didn't contact every single property owner. There was not a discussion of every single, because it's just too difficult, right? I'm assuming, I mean, I know other cities do, but I don't think in case San Jose did.
That's correct. We didn't contact every property owner.
Got it. And then.
And they would have gotten a, a notice in the mail, right?
For this one in particular, there were notices mailed to property owners and then the five-hundred-foot radius for the community meeting and for this hearing.
And then there were property owners specifically, including Apple and others that we did reach out to directly, and I believe this was one of them, but we didn't hear back.
Got it.
Right. I mean, sorry, Commissioner Oliverio, we were cognizant of the fact that we, um, you know, we agree with the property owner that, um, obviously included in this, uh, proposal is a significant number of sites, uh, owned by, owned by their, uh, company. Um, again, we did make some attempts to reach out, um, and I guess, just to kind of give some background, um, the, the reason for their inclusions on this is that, um, for affordable housing to get developed, they're basically, they're, they're scored, um, on a number of things. I think, you know, Ruth touched on this early on, but, but because of these sites, you know, close proximity to transit, uh, close proximity to other resources in, uh, North San Jose, uh, they score very highly. Um, and they would be very, much more likely to, to be able to, in fact, it's possible that they may even be more likely to be able to develop, at least in current market conditions, under affordable housing, as opposed to market-rate development, just because of the way, uh, they would potentially score.
Yeah, it would seem like the state forces cities, look at your map, tell us, based on, we give you a variety of requirements, and Ruth had a lot of acronyms, and go designate this, this property for something else. And irregardless of the property owner likes it or not, cities may just paint them a different color and do something else. I mean, that's fair enough to meet the state, uh, guidelines until some city sues or until the residents pass a new law giving local control.
Also, keep, keep in mind for the North San Jose area, Commissioner, that we had council direction. You know, there was, there's been a longstanding goal, as I'm sure you're aware, that there'd be, you know, uh, twenty percent of the units built in North San Jose be affordable, and previously, the city hasn't delivered on, on that goal. And so our objective was to increase the number of affordable housing units, and so we looked at a target of twenty-five percent of the units. And so in looking at where to place this new overlay where only a hundred percent affordable could go, we targeted those sites where, you know, affordable housing would be most competitive for receiving tax credits and where it would be best suited. Um, so that's why these properties, we, we looked at and considered and moved them from the tarot to this new overlay and trying to further those goals from, from council.
Right. And then the state, they don't care that San Jose had this North San Jose plan where we were sort of doing, uh, stage gates of housing and jobs, and we got all the housing, but we got, we didn't get the job criteria, the amount of jobs we wanted. And so that, now we're just kind of lean on it a little bit more to push a little bit more housing in North San Jose, and we don't know when the next office building is going to be built in the city. Um, but inevitably, these are just, again, this is the state imposing on the city. I mean, that, that seems like the overarching theme here.
Well, I don't know that that's the case in North San Jose. So in North San Jose, we actually, uh, we're not changing the housing capacity. It's what the capacity in the general plan, actually reduced it a bit through this process and moved housing elsewhere. So it's, it's, what this, the housing element is working through the existing land use framework that we have. The change in North San Jose is there was not clarity in the existing North San Jose policy often of where housing specifically could go. So what we did is we actually refined, we, we, that policy was retired, and we went back and really made it more clear where the housing would, could go. And then on top of that, the council has had a longstanding goal that twenty percent of the units in North San Jose would be, would be affordable. But for a whole host of reasons, that has not happened. We built the market rate, but not the affordable. And this was one tool in the toolbox that staff identified and council agreed with, where they saw we could actually get to that twenty percent affordability. It's been all, I don't know, a twenty-year plan in North San Jose that hasn't happened. Um, yeah. And I think the other thing to note, correct me if I'm wrong, I know that one of the property owners owned by Perry Ariaga is, um, was tarot, market rate, and is being proposed to change to an affordable. Is that correct? But the other ones, correct me if I'm wrong, were just industrial park, and so now we're adding this other opportunity on top that wasn't there before. Is that correct, Ed?
Uh, to some extent, to, I mean, honestly, more of their sites are mo, there are some sites that we're adding the, the Affordable Housing Overlay that didn't exist before, uh, but out of their, the, I think they have six total sites. I believe that four are, are switching from the tarot to, uh, the, uh, Affordable Housing Overlay.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just think, uh, obviously, you know, we, the council has provided guidance, you know, that I think I've heard Councilmember Cohen say that at the end of the housing element, or at some point in the future, District Four, North San Jose, will have a, an incredible amount of housing, I think he said, will be the number-one, uh, low-income housing, uh, units per district. So, and I, then policies like these enable that to happen. Um, I don't think, uh, on the, uh, if you're the financial accountant for the city, I, I don't think you'd like some of these policies because there's no tax revenue to pay for city employees' wages based on some of these decisions. But again, it's, we're choosing another, we're offsetting that by having a higher priority to something else. So I, I get it. I just like to fully understand this, so thank you.
Okay, so I have Commissioner Tortillas, then Young, then Nelswise.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, staff, for the detailed, uh, presentation and also the staff report. I'm definitely supportive of the spirit of this proposal, and I think, you know, these two new overlay districts are useful tools in helping to reach that goal of twenty percent affordable units in North San Jose. Uh, I just had a quick question in terms of the selection of the sites for both overlays and, uh, I guess, the eligibility to some extent. Uh, so as I was looking through the, uh, most recent update to the site inventory, I noticed that it seems as if a couple of these sites, I guess, one of the, uh, mixed income overlay sites and four of the affordable, uh, housing overlay sites seem to also meet the qualifications for the HERO overlay, uh, that we'll be talking about next in terms of having been identified in a previous cycle, uh, of housing element planning, uh, and being designated to accommodate lower-income housing. Uh, so I guess I'm just curious about the interplay between these two different overlay districts and whether sites that are eligible for the HERO district should have that designation instead.
Thanks, Commissioner, for the question. So, um, the, the overlays that we're creating here in North San Jose, um, are fulfilling the state law because these, these developments can be approved by right and have at least a minimum of twenty percent of affordable. Um, so, and the HERO also has those requirements that we'll talk about. So, um, it's really either or. They don't need to have both. The, the AHO and the, the MHO, the, the Affordable Housing Overlay and the Mixed Income Housing Overlay are intended to comply with the same state law while also meeting the other criteria that we've set. So they don't, it doesn't need to have both, but, so, if that makes sense.
I guess in my reading, it seemed like they had slightly different qualifications. I guess on one hand, it seems that for the HERO sites, it's a twenty percent affordability threshold for the ministerial approvals, whereas I think the staff report says twenty-five percent threshold for the, uh, sites in North San Jose. So that's one difference. And then the other one that I would just flag is obviously the, uh, Affordable Housing Overlay requires a hundred percent resident, one hundred percent affordable residential development, whereas it would seem that if those sites were eligible for the HERO overlay, they would only be required to have twenty percent under state law.
Yeah, so I, I think in, in this case, we're, um, these require twenty-five percent, so we're, we're exceeding that twenty percent requirement, uh, that, that's there. So that's, that's the, the difference. So, um, the, the requirements are the ones that, the sites that we're, we're rezoning that have to be by right and have, uh, twenty percent be affordable. So in this case, we're requiring twenty, twenty-five percent affordable and have a by, by right process.
So is it the case that if a developer came on one of these sites, say one in the AHO, and said that they wanted to build a project that was twenty percent affordable, they would not be able to use the ministerial process laid out in, uh, the housing element law?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we, we look at twenty percent as the minimum, but we, we have the authority to go higher than that. So that's what we're doing. In this case, it's twenty, or it's twenty-five, or in the case of, actually, I don't think we have an affordable housing overlay. Well, if there, if there is a case where there's an affordable housing overlay that, and we have, we're rezoning it to keep it, blah, 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 um, then that case, it'd be have to be a hundred percent affordable to do a ministerial.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit confused about the interplay here between what we're doing and state law requirements, given that they seem to have pretty clear guidelines for how cities should respond to sites for lower-income housing that have been identified in previous cycles, and it doesn't seem like this fits.
In our conversation with HCD, I mean, I think this is, this is, this has not been an issue, and in our understanding of the law is that you, you're not precluded from raising the requirement. You can't go below twenty percent.
Okay, I guess a follow-up question here, since I don't think we're going to sort this out in this meeting. Uh, it's just a question that if it comes to pass later, that we decide that it might make sense for some of these sites to move between these different zoning districts, uh, with, or overlay districts, whether it's the HERO or the AHO or the, uh, mixed income, what is the process for actually moving these sites?
I guess it would be a, a, under general plan amendment and rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Young and then Nelswise.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Actually, I have a question for our staff attorney. Um, this previous speaker used the term taking. That's the second time that, that, at this meeting, that's been used. Um, I wonder if you could explain to the commissioners what, what he's referring to.
Sure. I think very briefly, uh, a constitutional taking is when you deprive a property owner of the economic benefit of the use of their land. Uh, so if a property owner, for example, says that the city's regulations are so onerous that they can no longer benefit economically from their use of the land, then that would constitute potentially a taking. In the context of the AHO and the MHO, uh, the city is not taking away the base zoning that already exists. Instead, the city is not depriving any property owners of the ability to develop their land. Uh, it is through the overlay simply allowing them an additional option to develop affordable housing or mixed income housing.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, uh, just to confirm, you don't see this item as constituting a taking?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Vice Chair Nelswise.
I have a question in regards to the Affordable Housing Overlay. Who came up with that name? Was it the state, or was it staff, or was it? Just wondering.
Yeah, I think that was just a staff determination. I think that's kind of the designation we used roughly a year ago when we kind of were evaluating, we used to look at housing in North San Jose with the retirement of the, of the North San Jose area development policy. There's no specific state regulation saying we had to call it that.
My only concern is that sometimes when people think of affordable housing, unfortunately, there could be stereotypes, right? I mean, I was just thinking, why not call it like workforce housing and mixed workforce housing? I mean, just something that has just a little bit more of a positive connotation. For some people, that might have a negative, you know, just something I was thinking about.
I don't see any further hands up. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Young and a second from Commissioner Rosario. Commissioner Oliverio, I see you have your hand up.
Could the motion contain the suggestion that staff, you know, meet again with this property owner? I had a situation when I was on city council where the housing department was rezoning someone's land and actually, there was no notification and it was a whole incident at city council. And I would just think that there's obviously a disconnect between the public speaker and your meeting, but just to just tackle that again, and I know Nancy Klein has Perry Ariaga on her speed dial for all the economic development stuff, so the fact that they haven't talked is a little bit confusing, but I just think it would be, that would avoid, you know, anything at the city council meeting. Is that okay for the maker of the motion?
Yeah. Commissioner Young, is that friendly?
I'm actually not in favor of that. I think the staff has talked quite a bit about how they reached out, so I don't think that would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Oliverio, do you want to try to amend the motion?
I know, I'm just going to vote against it. I'm not going to go to make a substitute motion. I think it's just simply kindness when you have someone that's approached in the public forum saying there's a disconnect, this is a substantial property owner, it's a substantial property owner that the city has wanted them to do much more in San Jose and I think it's just good for relations with a significant, this isn't just a resident saying, I don't like the project, there's a shadow at 2:00 PM. This is a significant property owner that has a, you know, there's a major taxpayer, a major player in our city. That's all.
Thank you. And I just want to remind the commission, I haven't brought this up for previous items because I didn't think it was necessary, but for general plan items, we need to have a majority of the body, not a majority of those in attendance to pass them. So we have nine folks here tonight, so rather than five, we would need six votes, a majority of the overall commission. But okay, so we'll go to the vote on this item. Vice Chair Elsweis? Oh, sorry. Did you want to say something, Aaron?
If I may, if the maker of the motion is not willing to accept an amendment to the motion, I think the commission could also just ask staff if they are willing to continue to meet with the property owner and engage in discussion, which I believe planning staff or-
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think we already, I already intended to reach out to Jason at the Perry Ariaga in between the meetings.
Yeah, since everyone's looking at me. As long as when the staff writes their, you know, what happened at the planning commission meeting, that my comments are in there. Sometimes they're not and they're significant, so as long as that's included, I'm happy. It doesn't have to be in the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Elsweis? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Michael.
My computer is on the, on the fritz here. So who, can you tell me who, the first and the second?
Yeah, of course. This is a motion from Commissioner Young and it was seconded by Commissioner Rosario.
Thank you.
Sure. Do you need anything else before we vote?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Vice Chair Elsweis?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioners Bigford and Cantrell are absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I believe that is eight yes, one no, and two absences, so this passes. All right. We have one more item under the general plan public hearing. This is GPT 23-007, PP 23-006, and C 23-108, which I'll just say in summary is regarding the housing element residential overlay district. And I imagine we have a staff presentation for this.
Yes. Thank you Chair.
Sure.
Kenneth Cho, planner with the planning division here, and tonight, we're going to go, go over the housing element residential overlay district, hero for short. Government Section Code 655-83.2 requires cities to rezone sites that were not developed in the fifth cycle housing element and are being included in the sixth cycle housing element to accommodate lower-income units. The rezoning will allow residential use by right for housing developments with 20% or more units affordable to lower-income households, which is 80% area medium income or less. In addition, sites must allow a density of at least 30 dwelling units per acre. Therefore, the city is proposing to amend Chapter 20.65 of the municipal code to establish the housing element residential overlay district. It is important to note that the zoning overlay will allow properties to continue to develop under the base zoning district, which also allows for housing. The development standards such as setback, height, et cetera, will follow the underlying zoning district. There is a total of seven sites identified citywide that will have the hero overlay, hero zoning district. This slide shows seven sites identified for the hero zoning district. Of the seven sites, one has the downtown general plan designation, two has the neighborhood community commercial general plan land use designation, one has the transit residential general plan land use designation, and three has the urban village general plan land use designation. All of these sites currently allow housing either through the existing land use designation or through a general plan policy. These sites account for approximately 787 units of the city's low-income rent goals. We are also incorporating changes and application requirements within Chapter 20.195 ministerial approvals to establish a local ministerial approval process. This will help facilitate housing development projects that meet certain criteria outlined in the overlay district to move forward with a streamlined approval process. This ministerial approval will fulfill the by right requirement as required by state law. To ensure the protection of environmentally sensitive areas, we have included site criterias, including but not limited to anti-demolition requirements for historic structures and exclude sites in wetlands, fire hazard zones, hazardous waste sites, et cetera. In addition, we will be amending chapter, the chapter to allow a streamlined ministerial approval process for agricultural employee housing in accordance with Health and Safety Code Section 17021.8. The original project scope included all properties that were not developed in the previous housing element fifth cycle and are identified in the current housing element sixth cycle. A general plan tax amendment was initiated due to the minimum density requirement of 30 dwelling units per acre. However, upon further review of state law requirement, only sites identified to accommodate lower-income housing are required to be rezoned to the new hero zoning district. All the low-income housing sites identified already allow a density of 30 dwelling units per acre end up. Therefore, the general plan tax amendment is neither needed or proposed and staff is requesting that it be dropped. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommends that the city council take all of the following actions. Drop the general plan tax amendment resolution and consider the determination of consistency with the City of San Jose 2023 to 2031 Housing Element updated, update supplemental environmental impact report in accordance with CEQA. Approve the ordinances amending Chapter 20.65 for the overlay districts to include the hero housing element residential overlay district. Amend the zoning district map to include the hero overlay and approve the, an ordinance amending Chapter 20.195 ministerial approvals to establish the local ministerial approvals for housing development, receiving entitlement under the zoning overlay district, and to allow a streamlined ministerial approval process for farm worker housing. This concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just want to make a note, I don't want to call anybody out, but there were some whispered side conversations at the beginning of the presentation and the acoustics in this chamber are incredible, so even a whisper carries pretty well. So if you need to have an extended private conversation, please step out of the hall. We'll go to public comment on this item. I have a card for an Edward McDonald, but I don't believe he's still here. Do we have anybody on Zoom who wants to speak on this item? Seems like we don't.
We don't have any hands at this time.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll turn this over to the commission. Commissioner Tordeos.
Thank you Chair. Similar question to the previous item that we're tackling. I have the sites inventory, the most recent draft open here, and it seems that there are, you know, at least six additional sites that are marked as being designated to accommodate lower-income rent and are also marked as having been identified in a previous cycle. So I guess I'm just curious about the way that we settled on these seven and any potential, you know, irregularities there. And then, as with my previous question, the process to add additional sites to this hero overlay, should we find that anything was missed in the initial kind of process?
So, I mean, we're happy to look at those sites. I mean, I think the intention was is that if it's designated for lower income that they, you know, and it wasn't the last cycle, that it needs to be, you know, it needs to have this overlay. So if, you know, we would need to consider those sites if those were not inappropriately. But, you know, the intention is that we were supposed to capture all the sites that were designated for lower income to be in this overlay. So it's, it's a new zoning district, so, or new overlay, so, you know, sites could be, I don't know, considered for addition to the overlay, but I mean, it is pretty specific to, you know, complying with the housing element law. So I don't know how many we would consider adding in the future, other than we're supposed to be capturing everything that's in there. So, I mean, we, we would want to take a look at those, the way you're suggesting, but the intention was to capture all that are lower income. So if there wasn't any, if there's some left out, it wasn't, it wasn't intentional, like, yeah, so.
Thank you. And then I guess one final question here is just, what is the timeline for when these rezonings have to happen? I think it might be three years from the start of the planning period in terms of identifying these previously identified low-income sites? Is that your understanding?
These sites need to be rezoned by January 31st of next year. So it's one year from the statutory deadline. So, yes, it needs to be, that's why we're here now and going to council is that these sites need to be rezoned, either have rezoned or have overlay, which is the equivalent of rezoned by that time. So.
Thank you.
Don't see any other hands up. Do we have a motion? Go ahead, Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you Chair. Just understand, is the ministerial approval discretionary on our part of the city or we have to?
It's, it's not discretionary. As long as they meet the standards that we've set, then there's, it's, it's a ministerial process, it's not discretionary.
Right. But so prior to this, they would go through a normal entitlement process with public hearing?
That's correct. And, and the way that these sites are set up too, if they do not include the 20% affordable, then they would go through the normal discretionary process. So if they are including the 20% units affordable, then they, they can achieve the by right ministerial process. So that's the way this is structured with the overlay.
Right. So you're saying, but we as a city are giving the carrot of you will have a ministerial policy, option versus the state?
The state requires that there are a by right approval.
For properties that meet this requirement?
That are being reused in this cycle, in the cycle to satisfy the requirement for lower-income properties.
I just have a question based on what Tordeos' question on North San Jose, going back to that. I don't know, maybe I didn't understand your question, but I think what I heard you say is that there are sites in North San Jose that are having an affordable housing overlay that have a higher minimum affordability requirement than the hero, which is 20%. But I think one thing is the hero is, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys, Jared, and, but the hero is when you want to reuse an affordable site that you identified in the fifth cycle previous housing element and you want to carry it over, then you apply what we're calling the hero that says if you have 20, if you, you have to provide, if you do 20% affordability, you can do a ministerial process. In North San Jose, however, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, the affordable sites that we identified were not affordable sites in the fifth cycle housing element.
So confused.
I believe. That's my understanding.
We do have sites dedicated to lower-income housing in North San Jose that were in the previous cycle, so they, they need to have-
Oh, they need to have-
They need to have a by right and they need to have the 20% affordable. So what we're saying is that affordable housing overlay is equivalent to the hero in that it's satisfying the by right approval process and we're having a 25% minimum rather than a 20% minimum. So we're exceeding the, what the state is saying.
Yeah. My fundamental question there was whether state law gave property owners or developers a right to ministerial approval for a project that was, say, 80% market rate and 20% affordable and that we were therefore not complying with state law by increasing the threshold. That was the, you know, gist of my question.
The, the state law doesn't give them the by right. We have to provide that through this zoning action. So we're required to complete the zoning overlay that gives them the by right process. So, but, so we're saying that this affordable housing overlay in North San Jose is satisfying the requirements under that law.
Understood. Thank you. I guess, rephrasing, I would wonder whether we are then allowed to count those sites towards our lower-income rent if we are setting standards that are higher than what are laid out in housing element law at the state level?
And just since I think I'm still here, I'm just uncomfortable when we have discretionary elimination of the public process. I mean, I think there's, it's a good for neighbors to be involved in the developments that are occurring around them within the confines of state law and city zoning, but a ministerial, if you're telling me I have the option of not having ministerial, I don't think I like that. I think I'd prefer the public hearing opportunity, whether it's a director's hearing, planning commission, city council. That's just my thoughts. And am I off-base?
Sorry. Just to be clear, we, we are required to provide a by right approval process for these sites since we're using them in the housing element for lower income. So we don't have an option of providing a discretionary path.
Right. So you're telling me it's the state of California telling the City of San Jose-
Correct.
This is a ministerial process that removes the public hearing?
Correct.
Got it. Yet again, another reason to support local control. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other hands up. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the staff recommendation.
We got a motion from Commissioner Tordeos to approve the staff recommendation. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second from Vice Chair Elsweis. If there's no further discussion, we will vote. Vice Chair Elsweis?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioners Bigford and Cantrell are absent. Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is nine yes, zero no, and two absences, so that passes. All right. Moving on to the final parts of the agenda, we will continue the general plan hearing for the 2023 cycle four to our December 6th meeting. Do we have any referrals from city council, boards, commissions, or other agencies?
None.
Okay. Onto good and welfare. Do we have a report from city council?
I do not.
Robert, is there anything? No? Okay. I assume nothing for subcommittee formation reports or outstanding business or for commission calendar and study sessions?
One on Friday.
Oh, right. Yeah. Reminder to everyone, we have our retreat at, like, this Friday, the 17th. Yeah. Any, the staff want to say anything about that? No? Okay. All right. Then nothing from the public record either, I assume. All right. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Haven't had this one long in a while, so appreciate your time. Haven't had this one long in a while, so appreciate your time.